Good morning. The time is 9:30. Call to order, the meeting for Tuesday, October 11th. Erica, can you please do the roll call?
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Eric.
Commissioner Pinter?
Here.
Commissioner Odericio?
Commissioner Baca?
Here. If you can please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Okay, next item on our agenda is a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. The motion passes five to zero. So we're going to move on to awards and presentations. So good morning, everyone. This morning, we begin by highlighting Domestic Violence Awareness Month across Adams County and the country. In a moment, we'll learn more about the incredible work the District Attorney's Office, the Thornton Police Department, and Project Safeguard are doing in this space. But first, will Commissioner Pinter please read the proclamation into the record?
Thank you so much, Chair Baca. Our proclamation this morning for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2022. Whereas one in three women will experience domestic violence during her lifetime, and one in every four women will experience sexual assault in her lifetime, and one in seven men have been the victim of the severe physical violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime. And whereas approximately 15.5 million children are exposed to domestic violence every year, and 7 million children live in families in which severe intimate partner violence occurred. And whereas domestic violence incidents increase by 8.1% nationwide during the COVID pandemic. And whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, genders, and income levels. And whereas the crimes of domestic and sexual violence violate an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to systemic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas victims of violence should have access to medical and legal services, counseling, emergency, and transitional housing, and other supportive services so that they can safely escape the cycle of abuse, especially during this current public health crisis. And whereas, we encourage domestic and sexual violence victims and their families to seek assistance from appropriate victim services organizations, such as the Dedicated Systems and nonprofit-based victim advocates in Adams County. And whereas the 17th Judicial District's Domestic Violence High Risk Team, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic and sexual violence and its prevalence, and to eliminating through its prevention and education. And whereas important partnerships have been formed among criminal and juvenile justice agencies, healthcare providers, allied professionals, and victim services to assist victims of domestic and sexual violence and their families. And whereas Adams County, Colorado, has a moral obligation to work to prevent domestic violence, address its brutal and destructive efforts, and make ending domestic violence a local priority. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, the State of Colorado, proclaims October 22nd as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urges all residents to actively support first responders, victims of crime, their service providers in our community to work towards elimination of domestic violence and sexual assault. And this has been signed by all of us.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner Pinter. So we are fortunate here in Adams County to have many of our passionate and dedicated partners with us this morning, working to prevent and end domestic violence here with us today. So District Attorney Brian Mason, Thornton Police Chief Terrence Gordon, and the Executive Director of Project Safeguard, Jennifer Isle, please approach the podium. Do you make your way down? We want to thank you for the important work that you do to keep our community safe. Can you please share the importance of the issue and how you're protecting victims and their families? Good morning, District Attorney.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. I wish we didn't have to have a Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I wish that this problem wasn't as pervasive as it is. But as Commissioner Pinter eloquently read in the proclamation, domestic violence is not only a problem that we've had for a long time, it's getting worse. And it got much worse during the pandemic. And so it is important for leaders, and public officials, and governments, and nonprofits, police departments, to work together to try to address this huge, huge problem affecting our community. And although I wish we didn't have to have this month to recognize and bring awareness to this problem, I am very proud, as your District Attorney, to stand before this board and before our community and say, "We are addressing this problem in ways we have never done before." And we are collaborating with our partners to address this problem in ways that we have never done before. And the most important example of that is our newly-founded Domestic Violence High Risk Team. This is a team made up of partners, which I'd like to read: the District Attorney's Office, the Thornton Police Department, the Brighton Police Department, the Broomfield Police Department, Family Tree, Servicios de la Raza, Project Safeguard, Jennifer will be chatting with you in just a minute, Ralston House, Brighton Housing, DHS for Adams and Broomfield Counties, Safe House Progressive for Nonviolence, 17th Judicial Probation Department, the Adams 12 School District, and soon to be joining our team, the Colorado Legal Services. This amazing team of partners is working together now on this Domestic Violence High Risk Team to identify victims early, to get them the support that they need fast, so that we can keep them out of the hands of their abusers and keep them alive. And I'm so proud of the partnership between the District Attorney's Office and Adams County Government in securing amazing, and I'm going to say historic, federal funding for this team. That collaboration and that partnership is already having an impact on this community. And the fact that we have been able to form this team and expand it, and we will continue to expand it. Our goal is to have not just Chief Gordon, but every single chief from every single police department in the 17th Judicial District and their departments be part of this team, so that the team can be impacting and serving victims throughout Adams and Broomfield Counties. So again, I'll conclude before handing it over to Jennifer and then to the chief. I wish that we didn't have this problem at all, but I'm super, super proud of what we together are doing to address it. And I'm grateful to this board for your commitment to addressing this problem with us. Thank you.
Thank you all for inviting me here today to recognize Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'm Jennifer Isle. I'm an attorney, a licensed professional counselor, and the Executive Director of Project Safeguard. We are deeply grateful for our partnership with the 17th Judicial District and the opportunity to be here today. Project Safeguard has been providing services to victims of domestic violence in the 17th Judicial District since 1996. We provide civil legal advocacy and attorney services to victims confronting the civil legal system. Our work to help survivors of domestic violence obtain civil protection orders and navigate their divorce and custody cases is crucial to ensuring the ongoing safety of those survivors and their children. While people often think of victim advocacy, shelters, housing, counseling, and other assistance as being survivors' most urgent needs, and they are certainly critical, legal help has been shown to make an even greater difference in their future safety and security. For victims of domestic violence, their legal troubles don't end when a civil protection order is issued, a divorce is final, or a custody order is entered. Abusers, especially those who share children with the victim, use the civil legal system to continue their abuse and control for years. This type of litigation abuse, where the abuser drags the survivor to court over and over again in order to maintain control, is one of the greatest challenges facing survivors and their children. Most survivors can't afford an attorney or spend everything they have on one, only to find themselves back in court again a few months later. At Project Safeguard, our highly-trained legal advocates and attorneys specialize in helping survivors deal with these incredibly challenging cases. Even with a skilled attorney, the court system is stacked against survivors and demands that they do everything right while the abuse continues. Research shows that abusive parents are awarded custody of their children far too often, putting these children in harm's way and re-traumatizing the victim parent. That is why we are committed to providing legal services to survivors fighting these battles. While we don't always see successful outcomes in these cases, we can ensure that survivors have legal support and representation from people who really understand the system and what they are going through. We look forward to continuing and expanding our work in the 17th Judicial District in the coming year. And thank you again for inviting me today.
Good morning, Commissioners, Madam Chair. Honored to be here. This is my first time addressing the Board of Commissioners in Adams County. I'd like to thank everyone in attendance for being here. And again, I'd like to thank you Commissioners for honoring this month and issuing this proclamation. Way back in 1999, I was transferred from patrol to a unit that investigated domestic violence, sexual assault, and crimes against children. And at the time, I thought that kicking butt and taking names was the answer, how wrong we were back then. As I grew in my position, I understood the need to provide resources to create stability so that families could thrive. Imagine what we could do if we could finally get a hold on this issue, which affects more than just the suspect and the victim. The Thornton Police Department is a proud partner with the District Attorney's Office and our other partners throughout the 17th Judicial District in Adams County in spreading awareness and truly addressing the issues of domestic violence. But as District Attorney Brian Mason said, as we declare that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we proudly spotlight the work of our team members and our organizational partners, at the same time, we wish that there was no need for such proclamations. We wish that there was no need for shelters, or mandatory arrest legislation for confidential advocates, no need for protection orders, guardians at light them, or prison sentences at times to resolve domestic violence and intimate partner issues. Unfortunately, that's not the world we live in. We live in a world that needs those things, but those things alone are not enough. So as we continue to work together to focus on and address domestic violence and the related issues that it causes, those of us who have been in the business for decades understand that the way to solve this seemingly intractable problem is not the same old formula of respond, arrest, prosecute, repeat. But respond, understand, assist, and offer resources to build up people and to empower people, to empower families. And we do this through resources and partnerships, partnerships that are first built on relationships. If anybody sets out to accomplish this task alone, they will have already failed because we need each other. Over the past 30 years, a lot has been accomplished, but there's always more work to do. So I'm encouraged and I'm hopeful that with the dedication and the expertise of our partners and the tremendous energy, we'll be successful in accomplishing much more in the future on behalf of victims. Thank you again.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Jennifer, for being here. Brian, did you have anything additional to add?
I'll say one thing. I'm also grateful to the Board and to Adams County Government for lighting up our buildings in purple. I think that's a really visible and moving way to bring attention to this issue. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I get to the board comments, those that are in the audience that support victims, that are part of the District Attorney's Office, law enforcement, your nonprofit partner, can you please stand to be recognized this morning? Our victims' advocates? Thank you so much. Comments from the board? And we have a new voting system and speaking system.
Our computers are brand new today.
Brand new.
I did put my hand up in the relevant section, I believe.
Okay, Commissioner Pinter's first.
Thank you for allowing us to understand our tech while we're going through. Also very important business for the community and the county. Thank you, District Attorney Mason, and thank you, Jennifer Isle and Chief Gordon, thank you for being here today, and all of the nonprofit partners who are here. This proclamation is so important, and it's been a cooperative work of ours and our Human Services Department and the many nonprofits represented in the room today, and all of your agencies for many months and years. And we hope to be doing better moving forward. And Chief Gordon, you said something really powerful today. If you set out to do this work alone, you have already failed. And I think one of the things that is so interesting for victims of intimate partner violence, they already feel alone. That's part of why they're staying, is they don't feel that they have a team in their corner. Because if they had a team, they probably would have left already. And what we are saying to victims today is we are assembling a team for you. We are assembling a team of immigration specialists, of healthcare specialists, of crime specialists, of legal aid specialists, of child custody, therapy, therapy for children, financial assistance, all the different factors, even pet care, all the different factors that might be occurring to you. We are trying to assemble that diverse team so that if you are that person who is feeling alone, we have assembled a team for you. And I love seeing this collaborative partnership to keep that team alive and well, so that when a victim steps forward, the team is ready-made. So thank you for all of your efforts and all of your time. I know this work is hard. And it would, I would, I think I would miss a moment if we didn't also acknowledge that today, October 11th, is National Coming Out Day, which means that if you are in our community, and you are in a queer relationship, you are a trans person, you are a non-binary person who is also suffering intimate partner violence or sexual assault, we have assembled a team that is culturally responsive to you. And if this ends up being your coming out day, and this ends up being part of your story, we are dedicated to having a team that responds to whatever you're facing. So I can't thank our nonprofit partners enough. I can't thank our first responders and members of law enforcement enough. And District Attorney Brian Mason, thank you for building a team that is so collaborative and so responsive. And if there's anyone, even one person who hears us make this proclamation today and feels a little bit braver to reach out for help, we can help them and assist them. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Odericio?
Thank you. You know, Commissioner Pinter just used the term bravery. And I think that's what's important here, is that what I see here is not, I see a system, and I've worked in this system as a former deputy district attorney in Brian Mason's office, and with many of the colleagues I see out here. It is a tough system. It's difficult. And at times, we find ourselves trying to pull people out of these holes and out of these impossible situations. But what I look forward to is the collaboration and the empowerment so we can help victims of domestic violence not just be focusing on what they're running from, but what they're running toward. And what I mean by that is running toward a life of self-determination, empowerment, and looking forward to accomplishing the goals that they want to accomplish, and breaking the shackles of violence that have held them back for so long. And that's what I'm most proud of, is seeing folks out here to say, "This isn't just how to get people caught up and feeling good about where, this is about how they can say, 'I'm taking control of my life, and we are empowering victims.' And I'm proud to be part of that group and support the work of Brian Mason, Ms. Eli, and Chief, and all of the folks out there." So thank you all very much. You are inspiring. You're inspiring me, and I appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Anyone else? So thank you very much, District Attorney Mason and Jennifer and Chief for being here. Thank you to all the nonprofit partners and community partners. I see our victim advocate, our law enforcement. We're here for victims. And you bring us hope. You bring them hope. So thank you for all the So thank you for all the work that you do and for getting up every morning and fighting the good fight. Thank you so much. Okay, next this month, we are also proud to observe the many contributions of workers with disabilities and showcase inclusive employment practices by recognizing National Disability Employment Awareness Month. I think I gave this one to Commissioner Odericio. Can you make it official by reading the proclamation into the record? I put my glasses on. All right, the proclamation for National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Whereas in October, Americans observe National Disability Employment Awareness Month by recognizing the accomplishments of the women and men with disabilities whose work helps keeps the nation's economy strong and by reaffirming the commitment to ensure equal opportunity for all citizens. And whereas it is estimated approximately 5% of the United States' total workforce live with at least one disability. And whereas this effort to educate the public about issues related to disability and employment began in 1945, when Congress enacted Public Law 176 declaring the first week of October each year as national employed the physically handicapped week. And whereas in 1962, the word physically was removed to acknowledge the employment needs and contributions of those with all types of disabilities. Twenty-five years later, Congress then expanded the week recognition to a month and changed the name to what we know it as today. And whereas this year's theme, disability, part of the equity equation, invites us to recognize that this Awareness Month is more than a celebration, it's a call to action, it's a time to recommit to the hard work of advocating for better employment opportunities and outcomes for workers with disabilities. And whereas Adams County Employee-Led A Proud Affinity Group, Positivity Disability, provides a safe and welcoming environment to foster support, awareness, education, and advocacy in and around the disability community. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, County of Adams, State of Colorado, proclaims October 2022 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month and encourages all residents to honor the multitudes of skills and talents of people with disabilities and the important impact they have on our society. And this is signed by all of the Commissioners. Is there someone from A Proud that is here today to accept the proclamation? No? Okay, then I'll just send it to the department later. So lastly, this month, we also recognize Global Diversity Awareness Month. It serves as a reminder to the positive impact diversity can have on Adams County and society as a whole. Would Commissioner Odericio make it official by reading the proclamation into the record?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. This proclamation reads, Global Diversity Awareness Month, October 2022. Whereas each year, the United States observes Global Diversity Awareness Month in October by celebrating and acknowledging the value of each human being, regardless of their nationality, color, race, sex, gender, country of origin, language, or otherwise. And whereas Global Diversity Awareness Month serves as a reminder of the positive impact a diverse culture of people can have on this society as a whole. And whereas, the population of Adams County is composed of many different races and cultural backgrounds based on the most recent census estimates. And whereas, after the Second World War, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights was adopted by the United Nations General Assembly at the Palais de Chalons in Paris. The declaration represents the first global expression of rights in which, to which all human beings are inherently entitled. And whereas Global Diversity refers to the range of differences that describes the composition of a group of two or more people in a cross-cultural and multinational context, many individuals and organizations, including Adams County, believe positively viewing and appreciating global diversity will allow us to adopt more inclusive practices around the world. And whereas Adams County's A Proud affinity groups embrace our diverse culture by providing employee-led groups sharing a common experience, interest, or goal. These affinity groups provide support, enhance career development, and contribute to an overall positive work environment. And whereas there are many different ways to celebrate Global Diversity Awareness Month, which include hosting a multicultural movie night with foreign films, attending a cultural art exhibit, enjoying music from different parts of the world, supporting minority-owned businesses or creating a celebration of your own. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado, proclaims October 2022 as Global Diversity Awareness Month and encourages all residents to honor the rich diversity of different cultures found within the county. Signed by all five county commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any comments from the Board? Seeing none, then we'll move on to public comment. Erica, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do not.
Thank you. So next item on our agenda is elected official communication. Am I in the right?
Yeah, I pushed. Did it work?
You have to be in the direction.
I'm there. Just I pushed. Did I do it right? Technology is so, yeah. Did I push? I pushed? Yeah? I had to push it, push it.
Okay.
I hate technology.
Commissioner Henry.
What happened to just raising your hand? Just, you know, just talk. Commissioner Henry.
I just wanted to make a comment about last week. I spoke with extreme passion regarding Advancing Adams. And in my comment, it was, there was some mention with a very broad, how can I say? I basically spoke with a very broad brush on some businesses, and I wanted to speak to those very good businesses that we do have in Adams County. And they did get swept up in that comment that I made. And I wanted to say that I do know that we have many good businesses out there that have invested in Adams County, and I do know that they have worked with Adams County, and I do appreciate those businesses, and I do look forward to continuing to work with those businesses. So I do want to thank them for the investment that they have made in Adams County, and I look forward to continuing to work with them.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? I'd just like to add, I want to thank the Adams County Sheriff's Office. So last week, they invited the Board of County Commissioners and our executive assistants to take a tour of Flat Rock. So we got to experience more of what they do firsthand every day in some of the training and also the facilities that they are trained in. So a special thank you to the Adams County Sheriff's Department, to Rick, and then all the deputies and assistants that were out, that hosted us last week. So thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Next item on our agenda, make sure I'm in the right place, is a consent calendar. I just need a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent calendar as presented in the agenda.
The motion passes five to zero. Next item on our agenda is under New Business. Good morning, County Manager Bernal.
Good morning, Commissioners. The first item is a follow-up to our study session last week on the budget. We have Nancy Duncan. The item is County Managers' Recommended 2023 Adams County Budget.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm still trying to figure out the new, I don't see, is this the clicker? Okay, thank you. I'm Nancy Duncan, Budget and Finance Director for Adams County. I'm here today to share the County Manager's proposed budget for 2023. Notice of this public hearing was published in the Westminster Window in North Glens Sentinel on Thursday. Okay, I can roll. I'm sorry. All new. I want to start with the operating expenditures for 2023, the proposed operating expenditures. They're estimated to be $629 million countywide, with one-time business cases and CIP estimated to be $84.2 million. Fund balance use countywide is $32.4 million, and this follows our fund balance policy established by the Board of County Commissioners. In the general fund, we're estimating $277.2 million in operating expenditures with one-time business cases and CIP at $20 million. The use of fund balance for the general fund is $15.6 million, and this also follows our fund balance policy established by the Board of County Commissioners. This slide shows the, well, since Adams County is establishing a new public health department, we wanted to share with you what that budget looks like so far. Right now, we are still refining that budget with the Executive Director of Health. We will have more information and keep you updated as there are changes to this. This is still a work in progress, but we will have more information for you as we move forward to the November adoption date. The budget timeline right now is we are meeting with you today on October 20, or October 18th and October 25th to continue going through the budget and receive feedback from you. November 1st is the first reading. November 15th is the second reading and adoption. And the 2023 proposed budget, which we will go over in more detail with you, it will be online today by the end of business at agcogov.org. Do you all have any questions as we move forward? It's been a very collaborative process with you this year, along with the executive leadership team and the senior leadership team. We've kind of changed philosophies moving forward. The budget team has been very receptive to changes and has been able to move in a direction that has been recommended that we move forward. It's been a very comfortable budget, I think. We've done really well in collaboration with you and also the other members of our team.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Questions from the Board? I don't see any.
Okay, we'll see you this afternoon to continue going through the 2023 proposed budget. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. County Manager.
Thank you, Nancy. The second item is resolution authorizing the creation of a public health department fund to account for revenues and expenditures for the Adams County Health Department. Mark Osborne will take this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. This item is to establish the new public health department fund as required by the Colorado Revised Statutes 25-1-511. This will be to account for all revenues, fees, grants, and other revenues generated by the Adams County Health Department, and account for funding of operating and capital expenditures related to public health activities. Is there, are there any questions I can answer for this?
Questions from the Board? Not seeing any.
I move to adopt this resolution. With both these budget items, thank you so much for repeatedly presenting to us in study session and accepting all sorts of public comment, as well as our questions over many, many months to get us to this point. It seems like a very quick presentation for very large items, but it's important to recognize that this is the summary of many months of intense conversation. So thank you, Mark, and thank you to Nancy, and thank you to the whole team that's been working on both of these items.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mark.
If I might too. I just want to say thank you, because you guys, I think, I think it's correct, you guys have done, worked real hard, and it's real easy to come up here and all you see is, I say, support, and then second, I think that's fair that Commissioner Pinter brings this up. This is a long process, and we have been discussing it for a long time, and you guys take into account, and there's always some principles that you guys abide by, and it's things like, we have a balanced budget, we are not spending unwisely. You guys are always doing things with a very prudent, reasonable, responsible mind, and it just, it helps. And so I think that a lot of people don't see all that work that happens behind the scenes, but I can tell you now, somebody who really cares about where that money goes, and a lot of the folks that are watching us do, you guys are doing a great job. And this group, all five county commissioners, I know, support notions of making sure it's done correctly. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I should have said that to Nancy too, when she was up here. So Nancy, that's for you. Thank you.
On behalf of the team, you're welcome.
So you know, it was a short 50 weeks ago, so we're not even to the one-year mark when Adams County separated from Tri-County Health. So to see how far we've come, to have the team that was put together internally, I've heard wonderful things. We had a meeting with the Board of Health, a social last week with the Board of Health and some of the staff members, and we're ready to go on January 1. And that could not have been done without the work of the entire team, from our facilities, our IT, PNC, communications, administration, so, and budget and finance. So we thank you all so much. This has been a huge lift for Adams County, starting a brand-new department. It is historic. You know, we are not going to cross this bridge again. It is a one-time, you leave Tri-County Health and you stand up your own health department. We have substantial growth coming to Adams County as far as we can tell in the next 10 to 20 years, and this was the right decision to be made at the right time. So thank you to the Board, and thank you to all the staff members that were involved. So thank you, Mark. And the motion passes five to zero.
Thank you all.
County Manager.
Item three, resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Shiloh Home Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $652,323 for guaranteed beds. Katie McDougal with Human Services will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Katie McDougal, and I'm the Human Services Director. Human Services is planning to contract with Shiloh House to provide three guaranteed beds for emergency shelter for youth in crisis every month, August 1st, 2022 through June 30th of 2024. This is a reduction in beds from previous use due to practice change, and I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Questions for Katie. I see you reaching Commissioner Tedesco, so I'm going to call, there you go. There was a delay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I do have questions about Shiloh House because it seems like a lot of money for three guaranteed beds. And maybe you can give me some history, because I remember last year, we had a reduction in beds as well. Is that for the same service, or was that for a different service? Because I thought that we were, originally, we had been giving somewhere a little north of $1 million for, I think it was 13 or 15 beds. And then last year, we came back with a reduction, and maybe it was for different beds, but we came back for a reduction, and I thought it dropped to eight. And now we're going to three? Where is the, I mean, I just don't see that drop in need.
So thank you, Commissioner Tedesco. Your memory serves you well. So the history on this is a federal and state change that has required us to change our practice, to move to a reduction of the use of residential facilities to the use of more in-home practice. So as that has occurred, you're correct, our approximate amount for contracts in 2019 and 2020 was about $1.2 million, funding 28 beds. At that time, the utilization of those beds weren't fully used. So while the contract was for that $1.2 million, the actual use or utilization of the beds were less than that. The practice changed in about 2021. That's when we reduced beds from 28 to eight, and a contract amount of about $668,000. Then, following that coming in, we had a rate increase. So we came back to the Board asking for us to be able to be compliant with the state rate requirements, and so we saw the contract uptick, and now we're seeing the utilization of the beds reduced due to our new practices, but also meaning to cover the new rate increase that occurred in 2021.
So a follow-up question. It just seems like an enormous... It just seems like an enormous rate increase from 668,000 for eight beds to 652,000 for three beds. I'm having a really hard time justifying a little over $200,000 for each bed.
So, Commissioner Tedesco, great question again. Partially, the reason for the rate increase was because of the shortage of staffing that was occurring within residential facilities. So, there was a large increase to wages for the staff who provide this care. In addition, the rate increase also includes therapeutic services for youth, and so that also attributed to the larger rate increase that the state has asked us to put into these contracts.
So, I didn't see that part in the, what we're paying for. What I saw is a $652,000 rate for three beds. Did I miss something in there?
I don't think you missed something. We can do a better job of making sure we articulate what services are encompassed when we talk about having a bed available for a youth.
So, I guess my, further my question is, is how much of the three beds do we utilize on an annual basis? Because from what I'm understanding, they're not always occupied throughout the year. So, we're really paying that large amount for part of the year, not the entire year.
So, two things. It's fee-for-service, so we wouldn't be paying for the bed unless they're used. So, while the contract amount is totaling about $652,000, we would only provide the amount to Shiloh in the instance that the bed is utilized. But it does make the beds available in the instance that we do need to provide care for one of our youth through the residential facility.
This money is used through the residential facility?
It's, the contract is used to fund Shiloh House, which is considered a residential care facility, yes.
Right. So, I guess I'm just having, maybe I should have had more questions before, but I'm having a hard time with the 652,000 because I'm not sure that it's being utilized at its full capacity for beds. I'm hearing that it's being utilized more for other services, which wasn't in the package.
So, the utilization of beds includes those other services. So, when a youth is at Shiloh House, they have a place to remain safe and have food, have shelter, but they also have other services that are provided to them to help with their mental health, to help with transportation if they need to get to school, things of that nature. So, happy to maybe come back during a study session to provide more information about what all of those services are that are provided within this particular contract. But it is, the main point is to have the beds available in a situation where we do need to place a child.
Yeah, and maybe we do need to talk about this more because when you talk about when the youth is in Shiloh House, they have to be, from my understanding, to be in Shiloh House, they have to be occupying a bed. So, they don't receive the services unless they're actually occupying a bed. So, I understand that the services are being paid to Shiloh House for ongoing services and beneficial services while they're there. But my question is, is we don't occupy those beds on a regular, full-capacity basis, and that's where I'm having the concern that we're giving 652,000 for three beds when we're down from around 13 and 15 in just a year's time. I don't know where else we're putting money that's covering that gap because I know the need didn't go away. That's, that's it, but I'll tell you this, that I would appreciate it if we could take this off and have a discussion about it rather than just approve the 652,000. I'm not sure that I understand completely the complexities of what we're giving. I do appreciate the fact that you said that they don't get the money unless we use their service, but.
Katie, are there any timing factors here on the contract? We have, I'm going to reset here.
Hold on. Do that quickly.
Next week.
So, hang on one second.
Sure.
I'm getting feedback from Commissioners that when we have the motion up, that they can't press to request a speak. So, we have two that would like to speak. So, you want to, which?
I always look at the shrink on the top right. This was on the bottom right. Sorry, thank you very much. Okay, so I guess my question is, is I must have understood the request to be, so it's a three-bed guarantee, but not a three-bed maximum, correct?
Correct.
And so the three-bed guarantee, I understand $200,000 a bed is a lot, but also, how high can that go? What's the maximum amount of beds that they have that can serve our youth?
They have eight total.
Yeah, I mean, that's expensive too, but we're also, you know, this isn't support for folks. I'd love to be able to understand a little, I guess I would support us pulling this and looking at a study session unless there is an actual need that we would then be not meeting in the interim while we have that conversation. And that's my concern. So, that is a question, is what is the timeliness of this request today versus a week or two weeks?
We, I would like that we not exceed out of October if possible. We do have two children that are in their care.
But, okay, by us not making a decision today, does that impact any children?
Not today, as long as we can come back in a week or two.
Do you, go ahead, no.
We have flexibility to come back, do study session and action within the next couple of weeks.
That's not what I'm hearing, actually. I'm actually hearing a week or two is different than saying that we have a study session in two weeks. I'm hearing that a decision needs to be made in a week or two. Why don't we take a break and let the county manager talk to the director, and you guys come back with some specifics on what you would like to recommend? Is that okay with the board?
Date-wise, I would just think an 18-study session, 25th action should keep us within October, just looking at dates.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Not, just not to go beyond the 25th of October. So, we have a couple of meetings to do, to stair-step at study session, and then come back for action.
I feel comfortable with that.
Commissioner Tedesco, would you? Feel comfortable with what we just discussed?
Removing it.
Yeah.
So, procedurally, Heidi, can you help us out?
Yeah, I think probably just a motion to continue or a motion to table.
Thank you.
And I think Erica said her system calls it continue, so.
Madam Chair, I move to postpone.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner. And I have a second by Commissioner Pincher.
Yeah, I'm happy to second. Do we need to say a date certain to October 24th, or is it dependent on the study session? No.
Not this particular. Just land use.
The motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Erica. County manager.
Final, final item is resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Epic Aviation LLC in the amount of $4,992,761.80 to provide aviation fuel and avgas, or also known as Jet A and 100LL. This one is Jeff Kloska, or I think his deputy is here.
I think we have item four first, and then we have item five.
Time out. I skipped because of my notes.
No, you're good.
Sorry, I apologize for that. Let me do item four first. My notes muddled the items. So, item four is resolution approving amendment two to an agreement, Adams County, between Adams County and the Brendel Group, Inc., for the amount of $220,000 for sustainability planning services. This is Jeff Bowman's item.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board and Madam Chair. I am Jeff Bowman, Deputy County Manager of Facilities and Fleet Management. Today, I'm recommending that the Board of Commissioners approves Amendment Two to an agreement between Adams County and Brendel Group, Incorporated, in the amount of $220,000 for sustainability planning services. In August of 2020, Brendel Group was selected from four proposers to provide strategic guidance to the county to move the 2030 Sustainability Plan into a relevant and actionable plan. On December 7th of 2021, the Brendel Group updated the board with progress in public hearing from the work that they had done in 20, the end of 2020 through 2021. In two weeks from today, on October 25th, the Brendel Group will present to the board during study session the work that is completed since December, and the presentation will briefly cover the updated 2030 Sustainability Plan and as it's listed on our website, completed water audits in county buildings, sustainability procurement guidelines, low-waste events, sustainability building guidelines, and a tracking tool that allows for the measurement and progress of our 2030 Sustainability Plan. This particular renewal in front of you will continue those sustainability efforts already underway and develop countywide water use recommendations, develop strategic planning for electric vehicle charging stations, will help develop vehicle idling management program, implement internal water conservation measures, and other items that will also be outlined in the study session on the 25th. So, with this background, I'm requesting that the board approve Amendment Two with Brendel Group in the amount of $220,000 for sustainability services. Are there any questions?
Questions from the board?
I'm just going to second. Steve, are you moving?
Yes, I was going to make a motion to approve as presented, and thank you for your work on this.
And I'm a second as well. And thank you all for your patience as you're watching as we adjust to our brand-new computer system.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, let's try this again. We have a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Epic Aviation LLC in the amount of $4,992,761.80 to provide aviation fuel and avgas. We have Deputy Director William Flowers. I even get to say the name right, so, thank you.
Good morning, Board. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as you all know, Colorado Air and Spaceport is the county-owned and operated general aviation airport and only spaceport licensed in the state of Colorado. Uses of the air and spaceport range from large corporate turbine aircraft down to single-engine piston aircraft. CAS, as we call it, manages the single, this, the single fixed base operator, FBO, located at the airport. The FBO is responsible for fueling, storage, tugging of aircraft, in addition to numerous other services, and support both base and transient aircraft and their users. Annual aviation fuel usage for 2022, this is approximately 229,489 gallons of Jet A, which is the fuel used by jet and turbine aircraft, and 187,058 gallons of avgas, 100 low lead, for piston-type aircraft. Contracted Jet A fuel is estimated to make up 89,087 gallons of the total Jet A annually, and the retail Jet A is estimated to make up 140,402 gallons of the total for Jet A. Earlier this year, CAS identified several deficiencies regarding the self-serve 100 low-lead fuel system, the primary fuel form, and the current aviation fuel truck fleets. The 100 low-lead self-serve on a cell system is beyond the end of, end of its usable life and requires immediate replacement. CAS aviation fuel trucks are beyond the end of their life as well. A new federal requirement requires new automatic shut-off devices at the primary fuel form. So, in order to correct these deficiencies, the Colorado Air and Spaceport is seeking the service of an aviation fuel provider to correct the above issue. An increased marketing efforts provide up-to-date training to the line service personnel, fuel quality training, customer service training, signage, leasing of fuel trucks, uniform support, credit card processing, annual inspections, quality assurance assistance, technical support, and part support, and part support is part of their services as well with Epic Fuel. A formal request for proposal was posted on bid net for the supply and delivery of aviation fuel, both Jet A and 100 low-lead. An evaluation team made of the Colorado Air and Spaceport and the Fleet and Facilities Team individually scored each proposal based on the following criteria. As they read professional understanding of the project, general project experience, similar project experience, general items, and fee proposal. After a thorough evaluation, it was determined that Epic Aviation LLC provides the best overall value for the county. The recommendation is to approve an agreement with Epic Aviation here at the Colorado Air and Spaceport to provide aviation fuel services and not to exceed the amount of 4.9 to $671.80 for the duration of three-year contract. And I'm here for any questions.
Great, thank you, William. So, I have Commissioner Odericio at first, and then Commissioner Tedesco? You're going to wait, okay.
I have a question. How much of this fuel actually contains lead, and are there alternatives to offer fuel without lead, or do we, is it a requirement that lead be in the fuel?
So, the 100 low-lead does contain lead in it. That is a going, ongoing situation between the whole aviation community. If I'm not mistaken, Colorado EPA put out something, actually, I think yesterday, if I'm not mistaken, regarding that, that's going to be, you know, a kind of step in the direction of what they can do to combat the problem. You know, as you know, 100 low-lead serves a lot of piston aircraft. I think it's roughly maybe 227,000 aircraft, I think that's in the state at least, that are operating with that. So, it's going to be hard for, you know, a lot of fuel providers, as well as FBOs, to, you know, go with the new system. So, that part I do not know.
Looks like you have a lifeline coming to the podium on this one. And, thank you.
Yeah, good morning, Jeff Kloska, Director of Colorado Air and Spaceport. So, this is an industry-wide issue. So, there's currently three or four alternatives that are being developed for 100 low-lead. The plan is by the end of the 2020s, for the FAA and the general aviation industry groups to select the alternatives and have them tested and approved. So, so that's, there's currently no approved alternative now, but there's three or four in the works. And once, once those are approved, we will, you know, the EPA and the FAA will say, all right, no more 100 low-lead. Now, these, these new fuels will now be, you know, replaced with that, so.
Got it. And I just, I'm going to support this today because we need to get this done. I'm okay with that. In the future, I would like for us to have a conversation about this, and if there's anything we can do to help take the lead on this or add it to our sustainability plan and have conversations rather than just wait reactively to the mandate coming down, I'd be open for that conversation, but that's a conversation to occur in a future day. Thank you very much.
And that's something we will work with. The fuel providers are very much a part of that industry-wide effort.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tedesco, did you want to speak?
Yes, Madam Chair, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the board wanting to get involved in this. This is something that we've been addressing on the cab, the Colorado Air Nautical Board. This is something that your board is already addressing and have been addressing. It's something that is important for us. The unleaded and letted debate has been an ongoing argument between providers and consumers and the industry itself for a long, long time. I do want to say that there are some alternatives out there that show promise and shows some, some very good benefits in shifting, but it's going to take an industry-wide push to make that happen because a lot of the consumers may not want to make that push. So, that's going to take an ongoing effort, and that's where we need to step in and really kind of help push this along. I do want to ask, though, when the $4 million, you listed a laundry list of items. a laundry list of items, especially new equipment and new tanks and new, who is the owner of that equipment? Will it be the Epic Aviation, or will it be Adams County? Are we supplying them with the monies to buy and supply us? And if something happens and we change our contract, do we then have to buy it from somebody else again? Or is that an Adams County asset? Because I'm confused that it's listed as Epic Aviation. It seems like we're paying them for an asset, and then we don't own it.
So with this proposal, we will be the sole proprietor of those facilities. Epic Aviation will support us in enhancing those facilities.
The only thing we won't have is the other fuel trucks. We will be leasing them, and they won't maintain them.
So we're now going to a contracted leasing opportunity for equipment at the airport?
Yes.
Whereas before, we owned the fuel trucks.
Correct, correct. But this will allow us to get newer equipment more frequently and not have to go through the capital purchase of new trucks on an ongoing.
Yeah, okay. I see both sides of that, but that's, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't have any others, so I'm ready for a motion unless there's further discussion.
Move to approve as presented.
The motion passes five to zero. Thank you, William. Thank you, Jeff. Next item on our agenda is the county attorney.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have two executive sessions on your agenda for today. The first being pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute 246402 for B and E for the purpose of receiving legal advice and instructing negotiators regarding the Olguin claim.
Move to approve.
And the second one is pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute 246402 for E for the purpose of instructing negotiators regarding economic development opportunity.
Looks like it's.
Motion by Baca and second by Odoricio. The motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
So let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break, just over 10 minutes. We'll be back at 10:45, and we'll begin the land use hearings.
I am. You are. Just working on my M&amp;M's now, that's all. Oh, I only have a few. They're all mine.
Okay, we're back in session to begin the land use hearings. The time is 10:45. So, County Manager.
We have an update from our Community and Economic Development Department on this particular land use hearing.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Nick Eagleson with the Community and Economic Development Department. And this is the Ascent Drive Resort case, and it's case number PRC 2021-06. The request itself is for a conditional use permit to operate a racing facility, as well as a vacation request to vacate a portion of 96th Avenue. There was a noticing error by the I-70 Scout out east, and it never got published in the local newspaper. And staff identified that I-70 Scout did not make this publication. So we are recommending that the board continue this case until the October 25th, 2022, hearing at 9:30 a.m. Available for any questions.
Thank you for that. Questions from the board?
Whatever.
Commissioner Tedesco, I see you, but let's see.
No, I have a question on noticing, because I know that we have certain papers that we notice in. Was the I-70 Scout one of the newspapers that we're contracted with to notice in? And I guess my question is, if they are, was it our, did we drop the ball in not giving them the notification, or did they not put it in?
Good question. So we have a number of local papers at Adams County, and we usually use the one that is closest in area to the application at hand. So in this case, it was I-70 Scout, because it's more out east. We did provide an email request to publish in the newspaper by the date that was required, and it sounds like they had a computer error and did not notify us that they didn't publish. And so we only found out about this error on the day of the Planning Commission hearing. And so, which is why we decided to publish in the Denver Post, which has a one-day turnaround time. We were able to make that hearing date on October 25th. We'll need to require, oh, we will need to continue the case today, the 25th.
So we're not publishing in the Scout. We're publishing in the Denver Post?
For this next one, yes, because of the turnaround time that was required. The I-70 Scout has about a one-week turnaround time, where the Denver Post allows for a one-day turnaround time.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Others?
Is it as simple as that, or do you need more of a record?
It would be helpful if we clarified it to the October 25th date.
To the October 25th date. Move to continue to October 25th. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. The motion passes five to zero. So thank you to staff for catching that. All right, the time is 10:48. With no additional items on the agenda, we are adjourned this morning. Thank you.